So.
All right, there we go. I am going to call to order the um August first City of Coos Bay Parks work session. It is four oh seven. Um we'll start with roll call. We'll start at the end for it all the way down. Yeah, Christina Tech Share City Coos Bay.
Great, how would see you today?
Jennifer, we're seeing seen.
That's all.
Coco Simon. Who's paid first commission?
Patty Scott Parks Commission.
Ariane Lines Parks Commission.
Jamie Faraday Parks Commission.
Beverly Myers Parks Commission.
Kurt Bamber Parks Commission.
Eric Clough Parks Commission.
All the order. Impostor on.
Amy Advent City of Coos Bay.
Um we're.
No.
So we're just, we're just gonna jump in. So because we started late and we've got a full agenda, um we'll we'll bump into the public comment. And we're gonna limit it to two minutes per person because we started late or we have no comment, that'd be great. And then we're gonna discuss not having public comment at the work sessions because we have too much to cover. So. Uh any public comment?
Well, three of us, I think. You wanna go ahead?
All right.
I'll go, I'll go first. Okay, just one quick thing, I I think really. You know, we'd like to address something that we witnessed when we're here to be able to bring it up to somebody. Um if you got many public comments, even in a work session.
I was coming at the parks meeting, not at the work.
As work session, yeah, I know, okay. Anyway, um. I was at the American Market upon on hour ago, and a car ran into the back of another car. And talking to the owner there, he says this road is too fast. It's thirty five miles an hour there. And uh. He said, there's lots of bikes and lots of people there. And there is, when you look at it, you've got a whole activity there. Downtown Empire is a ghost town. Down there is where it's all happening. But then down there, it's thirty five miles an hour. The ghost town is twenty miles an hour. You know, things shift and change. Um hopefully that can get looked at, and these are crosswalk, cross the water, and they have to take some food and then go eat on the water. And another thing, I took my tape measure out and I measured the bike, the lanes on that road. The bike lane is five feet sixty inches, and the uh the the driving lane is eleven feet. Then I measured the middle of my bike. And looked at you, a F one fifty is ninety six inches, uh a camper, uh you're uh or a the the uh. Big truck is a hundred and two inches, a camper's a hundred and two inches. If you're on your bike. And you're in the middle of the lane on my bike, and they're coming along the side of me there. If I'm in the middle of my lane, he's in the middle of his lane. We've got twenty nine inches to spare. Now, if I go over a little, if I go over a foot, he goes over a foot, I'm stoked. So it's something I think needs to be looked at one of these days to redirect that. Deal redirect that um bike lane for lower speed limits. You just, we just got an issue.
And I think that's part of why we were doing the the bike TCP, um the transportation plan, as it's related to bike pedestrians. So that it can evaluate each of those areas, and then we can have public comment on each of it. I believe the majority of that section is in Creece City limbs is twenty miles per hour, and then thirty, I think transitions when it goes to county, so that's outside our jurisdiction.
Uh this is city. Yeah, we've even got forty five mile down.
It goes uh, it goes from twenty to thirty to thirty five, and then I think anyway, it advances to forty miles.
Yeah, which.
Now, let him work.
Out of the jurisdiction. Okay, um but good points.
I would, I would like to just mention, I kind of um uh uh appointed myself a citizen fact finder. And I got the complete plans for the reconfiguration of Reed's Court uh from Brown Engineering. And it's so simple, and I have the ledger and and in the future, this is about one on one slowing down one on one by teakwood and stuff. So this is like a five year, you know, thing.
Yeah.
But uh anyway, uh we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna coach their uh their engineer and and uh stuff like that and uh.
Perfect. That's great information in collecting that. It is much smoother transitioning through there, um since they've done the latest adjustments.
You look simple.
Yeah, very easy.
I just wanted to relay a story of of. Intersection, the one on the the end of Market Street, or it goes into a front street. And uh. Quite often, I on my bike, I'm coming south on front, and then I. I go to that intersection and then go west on. Market. And, you know, there's traffic there. So I try to time, I can know the one on one traffic, but people coming. From the uh. Market Street, they all turn left there, so I have to keep an eye out for them. And the other day I was in the right lane, and I had the right of way, and I see this lady come up from market and put on a red jersey. And I thought, well, I've got the right of ways, but I'll give it to her. But I haven't, you know. So sure enough, I started out slow and gave her plenty of room. And I don't know if she even saw him, but she just made a left turn and like anybody's business. Yeah, so there's. I guess it's a possibility of putting in a pedestrian light there or something.
It's a dangerous intersection, an intersection that we we discussed quite a bit. And I think anybody who uses that intersection coming from any direction knows that it's not a great spot. So I think it's it's definitely an area that's highlighted um and is a main focus in in the transportation, the bike and pedestrian transportation.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that one up. I mean, that's an intersection. I got hit by a following taxi out in two thousand ten or something like that, and exactly looks like. So.
Not a great spot.
You're watching the traffic this way.
Yeah. Thanks. So that's it for you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for um for providing that information, and I'm not saying that we need to eliminate public comment from everything all the time. I'm just saying that the work sessions are forced to dive deep into stuff, and we see that have. Technology issues every time, so I just want to make sure that we're having enough time for a full uh session. Um, so that brings, let's just bring that up to the conversation. Should we continue to have public comment in work sessions? It's my understanding it's not a mandatory thing. We have public comment during our open meetings, our work sessions, we originally discussed. So that we can dive deep into stuff and have enough time to deal with it. Um, so commission comments on that piece?
And personally, I think public comments are a good thing, but maybe they're not in the time. It could be appropriate, you know.
The other thing that you might, you might wanna consider is. Um if it's, if it's something that we're actually working on at the work session, it might be public comments that are pertinent to what we're working.
Yeah.
So you know, um you know, so don't come in and talk about, you know, the boat ramp somewhere when we're talking about Cheryl's thing going to the major park.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think having public comment pertinent to what's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that seems reasonable, and then limiting it um to uh the not taking more than the first ten minutes. You don't need to buy that at the or whatever.
So at the last Park Commission meeting, this topic came up, and I think the city manager did it. Public comment options. Uh she did also say that uh written public comments is another way that public comments can be made. Uh so they might not be voiced at the meeting, they could also come in the form of written comments prior to the meeting, so they could also be a benefit.
Yeah, I feel like the public comments on the topic is the whole point.
Yeah.
So like that just happens during the body.
Yeah, or public comment that's related to the scope of this group. A lot of what comes is not anything that we are decision makers about, or even recommenders. There are problems that are existing that are part of the ODOT, the city, or the county's problem, and it's nice to know about them, but. We can't solve them. So they need to go to the people who can solve them. And to be clear, we appreciate all the work and everything that you guys are doing. We just have pretty full agendas, and we're now meeting twice a month, so we're just trying to get. Get through, and then we think that the the bike and the transportation plan is gonna be an integral piece that that was.
I've got a wonderful question, and you see, to me, I wanna discuss bikes and bike infrastructure and stuff like that because it's my passion. Um I've been directed to the podcast because they have a charge of bike infrastructure and stuff like that, so I'm now limited to one time a month. So there's no point coming to the work session or whatever. But if if the bike, you know, bikes are my interest. And you know, I listen, I've listened to a lot of stuff going on about signs, all sorts of stuff, parks, but I'm interested in bikes. Um. So do it, is it just now, I'm just now limited to once a month, then?
It it depends on what's on the agenda for the work session. So just like. Today, our our focus is alternative funding sources. So, because so the full, the when we decided to do the work sessions, the goal was to have. More time so that we could focus on this, but the last couple of work sessions, we are still rushing through the one item that that was on our agenda. Because we're dealing with other stuff, and some of it's technical issues and all of all that other things. And we appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and that's a big part of why we push forward, and one of our goals is the transportation plan, because we think that's an integral piece.
I was just gonna say that at our next regular meeting, we're gonna review and probably approve of like pedestrian fact climbing thing. And so you won't be limited to one meeting, one like the Parks Commission meeting. There's gonna be another group to sort of really focus in on pedestrian and bike issues that you all will be able to come to.
And 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 part of that is so that you can, then you guys can bring that information to us. So are we of the general consensus that we're gonna do a public comment based on what's on the agenda and then limit um timeframes? For ten minutes divided by whoever's. Reasonable to be.
What was the last one?
The the public comments for the first ten minutes, and we'll just divide it amongst whoever's. Works here to speak. So. So then we can focus the other hopefully fifty minutes-ish on. But it's also being respectful of staff time, because I know. You guys only have such time.
So the ten minutes open for other topics, or is it just for it?
Just the what's on the agenda.
And you're just talking about the work session?
Just the work session. Parks mean, they come to talk about, I mean.
Yeah.
Within reason, whatever.
I guess my point was saying that discussion happens during the body of committee when it applies to that.
Yeah, I'm not.
So this is why public comments are welcome, because it's a much more relaxed environment during work sessions, it's not the same protocols. Whereas we still are here and meeting, so we could take some public comment on other things for a security small. That's where I was gonna make some. I'm restricting ten minutes to discussion about the thing that we're going to discuss seems um low. And.
I run my meetings pretty open in general, and we can change, we can always change, and if somebody changes. Like if we're in the middle of talking about something and you have something that's pertinent. I'm really open to, because this isn't normal in that way. I mean, I even do that and getting a little bit of trouble on it during the Parks Commission, because I let people stand on the thought.
Yeah.
Um when when it's.
Okay, well, I I shared mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay. All right, so we're moving on to our agenda item today, which is alternative funding sources.
So at the uh. During eighteen twenty twenty four Parks Commission meeting, the commission requested a focal point for the artist's work session. Be the Parks Commission recommended goal of alternative funding sources. The city's parks are underfunded. The need for alternative funding source is imperative to continue to maintain the facilities that are existing. Alternative funding sources will help funding improvements necessary to improve the user ship experience of the park system. Possible talking points or considerations may be park districts. Um park improvement districts, public private partnerships, grants, user fees, and or donations. So with that, I'll turn it over to the commission to. Flower us with ideas.
Perhaps.
Yes.
I I bought a towel ball.
Well, hey, great.
I was thinking that we were gonna talk about different strategies. Carmen and I kind of talked sidebar on. A a longer term, more sustainable way to fund parks in addition to grants.
Yeah.
Through. A tax revenue or. Park district or. Whatever, that the grants are always gonna be there, and they're a great source, but they're, I don't consider that an alternative. Source. I I consider that a way to get projects done.
Oh.
But I'm kind of, it's great to have all this, but.
Okay, these are just, uh just some things that I was just about reaching a trip, reaching.
Trying to help you guys get the conversation started. Yeah.
Coco?
Well, I know we have a limited budget in the city and fire, life and safety, sewer plants and potable water. Streets, street lighting, those kind of things are always gonna be priority. However, we have a large. Two large urban renewal districts that we've stretched out over many decades to do things. And generally, urban renewal districts in some states that started it, such as California, have kind of died off because they start going into something they were never intended to be. So a question to not gutting it or saying that it's wrong, but might need to rethink the amount that we're putting off of that tax base, which we have a limit on in Oregon. Can we use some of that to go back and put back into parks? Because in the eighties was when things started closing up here. And they had, for example, volunteer coordinator and other things, and those things went away along with heavy industry. And other entities that funded some of the things that the city didn't have to work on. So that's just something to think about, because we only have a limited budget, and in getting grassroots or other partnerships. Every building that the city has has a need for funding for roofing or windows, whether it's the Kuz Arby's in the boardwalk. Uh the Egyptian Theater, et cetera. So that's something to think about is you get X amount of tax dollars. Urban renewal can generate new tax revenue if it's a. Entity that's paying taxes, and you get that built up again. So that's just something to think about.
It does, doesn't our urban renewal state that has to be used on projects within the urban renewal district boundary?
Right.
What do we have that's within the urban renewal district boundary?
Part of topics, part is because the library is.
Right.
Southern part.
Why, why they look and see if there's anything else. When we get through this a little bit, being not not being very experienced at the Parks Committee. And like in two minutes or less, like a public comment, can someone tell me what our current revenue is now for parks, where it comes from, all the different sources?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
General fund.
So no grants, huh?
I mean, when we get grants, yes. The revenues, no, no. So and then the bike and the ped, um it's one percent of our state gas tax.
Yeah, so that's that's part of the two. So so it's general revenue, it's bike and ped cash money, it's grants. And do we get any support for parks projects from other groups to take care of revenue? Um. Pool skate park, anything at all like that?
Not really to date, no.
Okay.
There's been talk about it.
Okay, so I just wanted to know, because it kind of makes me think, okay, here's the thing, here's where we get income from, what other things can we think about? So.
Bear then. Jamie.
Um when, when I went. Being another rookie Parks Commissioner, uh I I. Heard to the internet to find out, I went to two sources, NRP, NRP dot org and City Parks Alliance dot org, just to find out what is the. Um. What are some ideas about uh funding parks? And. I just, I don't know what the budget is. I just heard Jennifer, it's it's the general, general funds that goes into a budget. And you're on the budget committee, Carmen, uh in all the councilors, yeah, okay. And I would, I would like to have an idea of a similar size town. What uh what do, what is the common expenditures for parks? If they have a park, you know, you'd have to find a similar. Uh compatible comparable place to say, well, this is how much. To have a healthy, well set, will maintain park system. Um and are we somewhere below that, in the medium, above that? That's just one of the questions that came to my mind, and it seems like our parks are in kind of bad shape, and this from the the last um. Survey that were done both by um. Some counselors here and uh through Survey Monkey, it seems like just being out in the parks, uh we're. We're struggling.
I know.
And so is there a way to prioritize parks? Because they are important to all sorts of. Things that make life in our community, as we all know. Better, and uh they're economic drivers as well. And there are all sorts of other things I wrote down here, but I I that's my first thought about where, where do we stand compared. Terrible other communities that have parks. Our size, I mean, because I I read the, one of the quotes I read in one of these is, uh, we're the first to get cut. Parks are first to get cut, last to be increased. Um, so.
North Bend might be a fairly comparable city.
You know, their budget is terrible.
Yeah.
Um actually.
Well, comparable in terms of size.
I I think what we did, we did our, the first, the very first master plan, the one that said, um we amended in this group. Um I think when we did the research on that, we're at, our budget is like a fifth of what it should be. Or something, something alarming um as to, there's an per acre dollar amount calculation that that you're supposed to utilize. And I'm just, these aren't actual numbers, but ours was like one point eight, and it should have been like nine. Um and so that we're, or we're very upset.
Yeah, so we're. On the low side, on the right track and talking about this.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're at the the bottom side.
So uh in addition to like actual funding dollars, there's, there is like the other component, volunteer. Um input, right? Bev and her partner who like make Josie Gardens what it is. Uh that is a huge contribution, things like that should not be like overlooked.
No.
But. It'd be really nice if we could capture that in dollar form, whatever the, I mean, I don't know what that would be if if the city were to have to pay.
Priceless.
It's a million dollar.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah.
And so being able to increase the public private partnerships, I think that is a really, it's a great thing. Um I seem to remember being, I wanna say somewhere in Portland, like near the Portland, do a walk through thing where. They had a ton of like placards and things about. Entities who have donated in various ways, and we're making the park or the zoo what it is. And I thought it was kind of cool, honestly, I did, that's my own personal opinion, but like if you had sections of a park that were just. Like this is the. Sauce Brothers donated corner of the park, I don't know, whatever it might be. That's a place where I think we should potentially start tapping. I think that there are plenty of people who will want to actually improve our parks willingly. As opposed to, you know, with a stick like or through a tax. That being said, looking at other. Populations in other cities, I always end up pointing to Ashland, you guys have heard this many times, that they have a food and prepared food and beverage tax. And their parks budget. Through that, or through that funding vehicle, I think they get like two million dollars a year. Into their parks, and their parks are spectacular.
They are.
And it just makes me like so envious, and I'm one of the people who would be implementing those taxes. I know that's maybe not a super popular um. Point of view to bring another tax, and I'm not sure how the taxing things go, because we have a maximum allowable taxing lid on. You know, all the different districts, they all have to match up to this ceiling that we have, and we can't go past that. And I don't know if that applies to, like, basically like service taxes or sales taxes. I have no idea what the answer to that question is.
You know, I don't, I don't know either, but you know, you guys added the service fee on to this.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, and it didn't, it didn't exceed the limit, but if it's a taxing district, then I'm quite sure there's gonna be.
We'd have to. Somebody would also have to give it up.
And then, yeah, and then all the other taxing districts that are also covered by that have to agree to it.
Yeah, exactly, and that's gonna be a tough one.
So is that something you'd like for us to maybe capture down, uh capture?
I, yes.
Yeah, so food and beverage tax.
Food and beverage.
A prepared food and beverage tax or some kind of tax that is on. Some kind of.
Yeah, or we're increasing the, or looking at the lodging tax as well, because then more, you know, that's a whole, that's a whole.
Yeah, I have a feeling that the uh, the visitors, VCBs are gonna be tightly guarding their coffers.
Yes.
As would anybody. And every.
Okay, so I have a couple of comments bike ped related, of course, and and to echo a support for what Carmen just mentioned in terms of public private partnerships. I think that there's a lot of room for that in the bike ped world. We've got this whole new piece of work that we're trying to put some emphasis on. And I don't see much funding there for it, so a public private partnership is a good. Good. Avenue for fundraising for.
Bike ped specific projects in general, not just bike ped.
Yes. Second is. Uh the one percent of, I think it's statewide fuel tax.
Yeah.
That comes to us. That's, that's a minimum mandated by law, is my understanding by state law. It's not a maximum. That can be increased, so I think that that should be on the list as you can use more now, that would probably take money away from. Other uses, but I think it should be considered at least.
So use more than one percent.
Right. I don't think there's any reason why. You know, that wouldn't be allowed, I mean, you know, so.
I know they're reevaluating the the gas tax in general, right? They are, but I mean, there's so many things.
Government, it's gonna be years. Few work groups that I've sat in talking about gas tax, they're not even close to figuring that out.
Well, it was the that that ODOT is stating is that their gas revenue, gas tax revenue is falling off sharply.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That's why they're they're closing in.
And yeah, more fuel efficient.
Probably tax.
Those tax.
It's coming, they're calling it like a convenience.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming, but it's gonna, I think it's gonna take several years, so. So looking at Eric's idea, that may be what to do in the interim, but then that require definite work with like council and the budget committee. That kind of, would you agree?
Yeah, I I I do, and you know, I feel like people are saving money at the pump. Because they have more fuel efficient cars, maybe there's a way to entice. People, I mean, this is probably a larger scale thing, but um, you know, entice people who are saving money in those ways to put their money towards parks, something more beautiful. And I bring this up not as like a holistic, like or state of Oregon approach, but wondering if. Maybe the, something like the. Prepared food and beverage tax could have a pilot program. Where we try it with a few willing participants who are going to say, we are going to raise our prices by. Two percent or whatever, and we're gonna put that money. Towards parks. I wonder if there, I mean, that's like a public private partnership slash tax blend, like a meshing. Uh you know, it's a program where you could opt in as a. You know, uh a food establishment or whatever kind of establishment, and say, we have this program where you can donate to the parks. For the reason of improving our community, uh tax deductible donation. It's more of like just an option to be able to see if that's a possible. Thing that people would jump on, and I bring this up in part because I've also wondered, like, how would the. Prepared food and beverage tax be uh perceived? Would it, would would all restaurants be like, oh, my gosh, Carmen, you are an idiot, why would you do this to us? Or would they be like, oh, yeah, that seems like a good idea to bring. I, my guess is it's the former, not the latter.
Especially with the announcement of multiple restaurants closing.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, so um I'm not sure how that will go over, but I also think that, you know, certain, certain things like one percent for the planet. And various organizations that people, that groups choose to participate in is something that is a draw for me as a consumer. So I'm wondering if that might be something we could set up as a, as a group, as a, like just a, an option to people.
But I I support fair parks.
Again.
And they can use them as some of their objects.
Oh, hang on, third point. I need to finish what I was trying to say.
No, sorry, I thought you were done.
No, so the third point I want to echo is James' point about comparing what other municipalities. Our size do with bike ped issues. Let's look for some examples where they have developed some recent. Uh improvements to bike pedals, and let's see maybe where they got their funding, if it's anywhere, so.
And reach around to other communities and see how they they were able to fund some of their, I mean, main projects.
Okay, to answer you, Willow Lake has an example that was recently done with grants and cooperative money. I brought that up a while ago, where we talked about Frankenstein in a plane. As for your idea, you're talking about adopter. Once you use the word tax. It has to go before the voters. So for example, if you have adopters, whether it's the Modus Center in Portland, which has gone through, I don't know how many adopters since I've been in Oregon, but um. Most people that I've reached out to that previously wanted to do adoption, they don't want to be on the hook. For a long period of time because of the uncertainty in the economy, and I'm talking about. The outreach statistics that we've gotten off the Adopt a Park Pilot Program, Bay Area Hospital, really wanted to be a player. They're the largest regional hospital in. The Oregon coast, but they said, we don't want our name, because when people think of that, they think we have to adopt it for X amount of time. That's why when we did our forms, we said orderly. Or you're adopting an element. And as far as plaques, anytime you build it and somebody donates, you have to take care of it in perpetuity. So one of the things people are doing now, for example, the little thing we're trying out, and when we do these adopt a park things, I'm just getting data. These are toe in the water at low or no cost to the city. So one of the trends in doing things is. You have a maintenance schedule that you work and put together, so like the Appalachian Trail, that's a huge trail. You have a maintenance schedule that you work and put together, so like the Appalachian Trail, that's a huge trail. But along that trail, different people take elements of it because they're clubs, just like the snowmobile for the winter snow parks in Oregon. So all of those things happen, but it comes down to, A, we don't have lottery funds. Unlike Ashland who had Chautauqua and stuff, so they're vested in their parks for century or more. Kusby does not have that culture with their parks, so you're trying to change the culture.
Yes, I am.
You're trying to change the culture and the best way is to, A, don't use the word tax. Ask people to opt in, and the cheapest and easiest for. Putting infrastructure and capacity on the city is usually adopter program, so if you go to any park. You're gonna see an adopt a park program, adopt a highway program, whatever, but you gotta have somebody manage it, in nineteen eighty, the city laid off their volunteer coordinator. So there were positions that did these things, but because what was happening economically, they made the decision to cut that. So then the question becomes like shore acres, we have robust volunteers for years and now they have to put ads in the paper begging. Because whenever you depend heavily on volunteers and you don't have a backup funding or prison groups, when that goes away. You don't have that and then you fall back into, we built it, we can't maintain it, and now you just soured the people that twenty years ago put money into it. Because it's been echoed for the city of Kusby for decades, we put money in, whether it's the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, I can go down a list. But you as a city failed to maintain and take care of it, so there's two components on that is volunteer adopters for an element. Giving them recognition with their city or a plaque or, you know, some other thing that can't be hacked or told taken off because everyone wants the medal. And someone that can keep up on that program as a volunteer, because the city doesn't. Have that position or those things anymore, and labor costs and the purse issue has chewed up a lot of the budget. I mean, that's, that's kind of how it is, so capital improvements, which is what we're talking about. You either have a taxing district, which is gonna take money away from Peter to pay Paul, that's what urban renewal does, with the essence that you're gonna get more in. Cities put their parks in urban renewal. Why? Because the first thing people see when they come into a city is what is your park and your cemetery and those other public spaces look like? If they look like, you know what, nobody wants to go in, that decision was made, that's what we have to live with, so the question is. You're gonna have to have a multi-pronged approach, some cities use a bicycle licensing. Or bicycle tax and that money is totally dedicated to bike theft, whatever, but then the capacity for the city or the sheriff's department comes into play. Trails get trail clubs or groups that are walking groups, so it's gotten more complicated because we don't have the heavy industry. And with and volunteer groups, which were baby boomers, are hitting the road, dying and not doing it. So you don't have the Rotary, you don't have the Schweiners, you don't have the Lions Club, you don't have the capacities that you used to, I'm not saying they won't come back. And they do good things, but that's what's funded this for over a hundred years.
So if we had a volunteer coordinator magically, would that change, do you think?
Yes, because if you look at the tourism. So you have people that go to all the things here that are the visitor and whatever board, that started with the original lottery money, the original lottery money in Oregon was for tourism. That's what the first scratches were for, and then as you got more money in, what happened? Now State Parks gets a big bunch of that money and that's what comes to you with all these grants, probably ninety percent of the grants you have. Are funneled through state parks, so it's just something to consider that you're at the whim of. Politics, economics, a whole bunch of things that have happened to Oregon and other states for the last fifty years and it's caught up. But depending heavily on just volunteers or prison labor is a big mistake.
Right, but nobody's proposing that.
No, but what I'm saying is that's what bought us in the position we're in now.
I think it actually.
So that's just.
There's a lot to unpack in what you said there. Sustainability questions, can you sustain this, and I think it's an important concept of, you can build this, can you maintain it?
Yeah.
And and that is important.
And it's user base.
Yeah, we don't, we're not shooting for utopia, we're trying to get something that works and, you know, sometimes you have to cross bridges when you get there.
Right, and we have data from things that we are getting some feedback from by the two things we picked in Adopt a Park. But what we're not seeing is we're not seeing the city council, other than Carmen, and we're not seeing the Parks Commission except for a few people. Robustly go out and be involved in it because those same people are also involved in. All the other organizations that I told you about, so when you only have a certain percentage of the population that's been. Volunteering their time and their talent and their money, that is what we have to change. We need to get those people, we need to reach out to them, and that's the challenge.
And I think some of that is is resolved minutely with a volunteer coordinator, because most people don't know what to do. And so you come up and you say, I need you to spend two hours doing this, then it's much easier to find someone to fill that role, but that's, that's. At completion and that it's important to have that plan in place when we go after funding or we go after adopters or anything like that. So that they know that their their entity is going to be maintained, and that's the same with these grants that are on the sheet, we can't let. What we've done with this money go to pot in the next two years, because part of our grant requirements is that they're maintained for a certain period of time. So so those are all important parts and pieces, and I think. A big piece is finding out how, what what is our goal number, what is our goal number for what we should have? Should do we, are, is our goal six park personnel um that are full-time, is that the goal and how much does that cost? And what's the most cost-effective way to get there, is there a public-private partnership that that takes on some of those roles? That instead of, you know, one part, we have like what, a half a park person now?
One.
One, yeah, so like one person, so how do we fill the gap between the need of one person and. Six other full-time people and finding that way.
This talk, Toppets is a hundred and twenty acres and includes watershed as well and multi entities involved in that. Mingus Park is fifty-five, I'm not gonna go into the boardwalk, but because you also have buildings that don't bring in tax revenue, meaning the Egyptian Theater. The Kusart Museum, you know, those other entities, if they were on the tax rolls and they were fully. Putting into your coffers, and so the the thing is, how do you incentivize people? To come in and we get a lot of people that say we wanna do something, but there's no coordinator. Right now, I'm a coordinator of things, but I'm one person, what happens if I fill over, all the records are at my house and on discs that I give to people. You know, so we have an adopt a park program, but it's not robust, because our website doesn't have anything on it. The only building you have that you can rent out on a regular basis, I'm not talking about a special use permit, is the. Mingus Park Community Building WPA Scout Cabin, well. You you can't find it, nobody wants to really rent it out yet, people have been talking on chit chat on the internet that work's being done and it's being fixed up. But it's five hundred thousand dollars to get that thing up to code.
Yeah.
Because of years of, we'll build it, but somebody else is gonna manage it, and that's just a cautionary tale of, do we wanna use an adopt a park? And do we want a coordinator and then that person coordinates, how do we fix with bicycles, how do we do things with? The trails, how do we do things with our waterways, how do we do things with our boardwalk?
Um the economic development coordinator, whatever the new term is that they use for it, what is their, what is their description? Because it used to be back in the early two thousands, when they got rid of the volunteer coordinator, that role, whatever they called it then, took on and then. That went away. Um so is it, is that person gonna coordinate the volunteering or is that totally out of the scope of that?
You know, I can review the job description, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
Because I remember reading the job description, I mean, just.
Yeah, I can, I can look it up right now, but I'll I'll chime in if I find something different.
Yeah, I don't.
I sure like to keep coming back in my mind of this public-private partnership. Somehow, you know, get more staff, you know, city positions funded somehow, I don't know how that would ever happen. Public-private partnerships seem like a pretty good avenue to pursue. I know those take management, so you kind of still need somebody with the city to do that, there's always some demand on the city staff. But I'm just kind of comparing what um. Kind of partnerships we have like at the community bike shop, right, we wanna get something done, we need to partner with somebody else, because we don't have a lot of resources ourselves.
Spit on here, don't take me for everything I say, um. How does that work, like when, let let's just say there was an entity that would handle all of the park needs. And what they would bid on that and then the city would review the bid and how would that be described?
Yeah.
Kind of be like how the city farmed out the sewage treatment plant that didn't work very well and they took back.
Yes, but I'm not saying that just because this C M H U failed doesn't commit everybody in the future. Which is the danger with the public-private partnerships, because there's as many fails as there are successes, probably more so. Because they're not, they don't have the same oversight as the city does and city budget does, so there is that that balance.
But if it's, if it's hundred percent not gonna get done versus fifty percent get done.
Yeah.
Uh you know, uh there's. Uh work, we're like SCAB, A Y A, there's these kind of groups that potentially can put crews together to do labor-intensive work at some of the parks.
Yeah, and their biggest challenge is the people to oversee them.
Exactly, so I understand that, so but but again, you start somewhere and then you try to find a way to do that, so you say, okay, well, maybe our public-private partnership. Can include some of these organizations that do career training and, you know, at-risk youth and.
We're doing that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing that, yeah.
Doing that.
Yeah, so we have a partner we're now, we have five interns with them right now.
There there's challenges with that, because these are kids that are eighteen to twenty-two years old, twenty-four years old, that literally have no experience on anything.
SCAB, you guys have worked with SCAB for quite a long time, as far as I know.
What about an adopt a park ranger program? Where you just help to pay for more park staff.
Well, there is Youth Conservation Corps, that's been funded in Oregon for decades, but there are challenges that they all, if you look up Youth Conservation Corps and their budget and the state budget. But they can't find people to lead the crews and they do even buildings now as what, so like.
That's not what I'm saying, no.
Yeah.
I'm saying, we need, we need people to give us money to make the parks.
They give you the money, that's what I'm saying.
Saying if you have a, if if we have a, and do we have a fund that is available that we can advertise that will help parks?
So part of the issue is. The city can't fundraise.
The city can't fundraise?
No, you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to fundraise as.
So it'd have to be a private or a grant group that would do that.
Or the adopt a park.
I was, I was, I was just gonna say, what you're getting to is which. You know, I've been on the library board and I'm currently the president of the Public Library Foundation, and that foundation was formed because of the very same thing that you're talking about. That they could go out and they could fundraise and they could do things as a five oh one C three nonprofit and people could donate and it would all be fine and. And and one, a couple of reasons, I mean, a couple of reasons that it happened, other than going out and fundraising was that. Some people were elected to give to the government, they don't trust the government, and no offense intended. But they don't trust the government, they say, if we give them the money, how do we know it's gonna go to the parks, it's gonna go to, you know, something else, so that was one of the reasons, and then the other big reason was because. Because people wanna put stuff in a will or a trust, then it's much easier with the foundation, the library got over two million dollars from one will. You know, and 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 this that, I I was there when the foundation first started, when Carol mentioned was the library director, because someone wanted to. Put it in the will, we went to the city, it was, it was difficult. And the foundation was a much easier way, so. I don't think that that's the solution to the park's financial problems, I'm I'm kind of on the things that were mentioned about some more stable funding. Funding, but I do think it should be an option that should be considered to help with donations and grants and fundraising, that's all, so you just make up the. Bylaws, you file with the state, you go to IRS and get your five oh one C three status um in your business.
And you have an audit that you have to pay.
Then we have an audit, but you know what happens is it really depends on how much money you have, you know, one, once we started getting millions of dollars, then we had to have CPA type stuff. But before that, we could have other people who will come and actually do an outside audit or CPA.
I think the limit now is fifty thousand.
I have no idea, we actually, we actually have, we actually have a CPA on the board, so.
Oh, oh, do they need to be on another?
Probably.
I got, I do, alright, I like where where this is going, it sounds like.
And there are people that have the mandatory distribution from their IRS.
Yeah.
And those are things that foundation leaders or people that run those kind of things, the adopt a park is the grassroots level that you can do easily for specific tasks. But when you're too key, doing major budget fundraising, that's what you need, a foundation or five oh one C three type things or, because you can't have. That be in the city venue, so.
And and you have attorneys, although they have to watch their responsibility, they can't make people do something, but if somebody says to their attorney. Uh who could I give some money to, or what are you interested in?
Yep.
And then you say, well, there is a parks outage.
So perhaps maybe a establishment of a parks foundation?
Yes. Parks Foundation.
Yeah.
Good one.
Large, large money donors.
Given our our demographic.
It's an option, right now we don't have that option.
The only thing we have is adopt a park and it's a pilot program and we've picked two things and we're throwing it out there, but we can't do that kind of stuff. So you're gonna have to either set up a foundation or some other venue to get that budget recaptured.
Today, Coco, I went to the library on the foundation and I signed the annual appeal letter, which is going out, yesterday, everybody on our foundation was. For their annual appeal, yeah, we don't get a lot, we maybe get four or five thousand dollars, just based on the appeal letter, so.
And I did an appeal letter, I got five hundred bucks, so.
It's great.
Through a doctor park and we already had it through the attorney and everything, because it's it's restricted funds for a particular thing that we chose. So we have some things in place, it's how do you get the buy-in?
Yeah, and I think, I think one thing that we saw earlier this year. Was the participation of the community regarding the pool boiler.
Yeah, they were very good.
And the speed which that happened, and so I. I think that maybe a lot of the perception that might have been out there about how government reacts to donations. May have been for just a little bit, but you know. I think I think the community did really well on that, so maybe if we have the right kind of messaging. Uh this body can maybe kind of create and say, hey, guys, this is what we're doing, you know, this is why we're doing it. Yeah, so I think it's just really, it comes down to communication, coming up with these great ideas and, you know, getting the message out there, and I think that.
You have to approach those sources of money or or put it out there so that they know there's a need.
Yeah, I don't run in those circles, guys.
Well, no, but, but I was inspired by that whole way that it developed, that was a really impressive. And and I also say the other thing that we do is we do file for grants as well, and we have a grant writer right now and that's perfect. But what happens is someday the grant writers no longer funded, uh it's nice to have another body that might be able to apply to the grants as well.
So I think the question would also be, what are the rules on the foundation, as in, can it only not include us? Is, does it can include two of us, three of us, what are those?
We have two library board members that get appointed by the library board, because we like the foundation, and we also have a library director, and that's actually in the bylaws. That they're on there, so, um, you know.
Yeah.
I I, we had a, we had an attorney do it, so I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we could figure out.
I'm in Mark installed in public meeting.
Oh, and by the way, it was.
It's not. Yeah.
But it has to have its own board.
Oh, yeah, separate, separate.
All along, cheers.
No page, no page decision.
Turning in here.
Eighty-seven director of the foundation. We do.
Right.
So out of those ideas, is there any like tasks you wanna assign?
I mean, I like Carmen's idea, but I understand the problem with.
But I think you can run Carmen's idea right now through the adopt a park. Because we already have a letter approved by the city attorney that gives people the tax letter. It's a voluntary thing, in other words, with adopt a park, we have forms. You're adopting a park or an element, so if you said, for example, we are offering. I'm gonna pick John Toppets part, we're redoing all the trail markers that were a special. Leadership program or Ford Family Foundation in two thousand and ten. And that put in the trail system. And that put in the trail system.
Trail markers.
The markers, but there's a map and everything that goes with it. So it was set up. But since then, on the brief survey, you've seen things get. You know, hacked, we put them in when we can, whatever. People donated benches or put benches in. There's hard skate down on the trail. If you want to maintain a hundred and twenty acres around water now on a trail system, you don't have a budget for that. So we're using a mechanism and if you wanted to ask, hey, with the food, food and beverage. Community like to adopt something. And they get advertisement out of it, or they do the once a, once a week or once a month during the month of whatever. People come in and we're gonna donate a certain percentage of our. Revenue when people come in to this thing. That's how a lot of that stuff is done.
So it's not a tax.
It's not a tax. It's voluntary. It's very specific. And the person giving gets a benefit out of it because it says, hey, people in the community, if you wanna see the new restaurant in Mingus Park. We're looking for the difference for the forty percent match. These restaurants or these businesses for the next two months, if you come in on Wednesday. And you spend money, they're gonna give a certain percentage and that's a donation through adopt a park for limited funds. In other words, they have a restricted fund that's already set up by the accounting system for the budget, just like they did for the pool. And it has to be used for that and it's audited for that. And that's something you could do now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and same with bicycles. If you said, we want our bicycle. Um, crossing, we can get a a grant from ODOT, we can get this, but we need that difference made up. Hey, all the people in the community during a certain time, you have, cause there's a lot of people that live here seasonally. And they come up to us in the park all the time and and talk when we're working on things and said, we didn't know that you had this.
We're gonna go Patty and then Carmen. Is there any is interest in exploring what a parks and recreation district would look like? And perhaps with North Bend.
Yeah.
And have a complete overall vision for the whole Bay Area. Charleston.
Looking at. That's like Metro.
And that it could become a special district. Of course, you gotta go out. But it it forms its own tax revenue and the cities could still support the parks through their. Their regular four hundred thousand dollars. But it would be a different. Maybe a little bit more sustainable funding source. I I just think Coos Bay, North Bend. Okay, I didn't grow up here.
Okay, well, I can.
But we waste a lot of money in duplication. In two different towns. I don't frankly care if the parks in Coos Bay or North Bend. The libraries in Coos Bay or North Bend, I go to whichever one.
Right.
I happen to be going by. And I. Live and work in Coos Bay. So. I uh happen to have come from Eugene prior to coming here, living and going to school there and their. Parks and Rec District is phenomenal and their bike system. Uh, but they had a vision.
And they had Peter De Fazio.
And they had whatever, whatever champions, but. That is a longer term, bigger, sustainable plan. Fundraising is great, but it's not.
I think there's two issues. I think you need a good mechanism for fundraising. I think you need repetitive, sustainable income.
Yeah.
Or elsewise, you're like PBS out of Ashland every year doing a drive, trying to make up the money, right? And you know, I don't think you wanna get yourself in that situation.
And the thing that would be for me to know is, okay, there's four hundred thousand dollars budgeted. There's however many acres you said?
Just, well, you're saying two, I'm I'm being conservative, saying two hundred acres just for. The pocket parks. The boardwalk. Toppets.
And does all your salaries come out of that or is that great money for parks?
So you're building, you're building the ground maintenance budget for your, all your parks together is eighty thousand dollars. That's all you have.
So what's the four hundred there for capital? For the whole city for everything that could. No, and that isn't, it's. Exclusive to parks, the no.
Back at back in the day, but I haven't been on the budget committee for a really long time.
Yeah.
We used to charge off some of the FTEs to whatever entity was doing it. So X amount of year time Jennifer is working on parks. Of FTT and parks budget that went to that. Is that still the case?
Yes, that's for instance, my salary comes from the general fund, comes from wastewater.
And a little bit from parks now or?
But is it in the parks line item?
So the general fund is grouped together. That's how the city does it.
The only thing.
Special accounts? We do our special accounts, but we don't have resources out of, out of, like the enterprise fund, like the wastewater fund. That has personnel services, but the general fund, that does not broken up in all the individuals, has five libraries.
Whatever they count for general fund and all. Holy moly.
My library is a little bit different. It is accounting wide tax base and so staff, operating costs all come out of that. They don't do their.
There's a small, there's a small library fund. We can talk about that. You've mentioned that before.
Because, because the library.
Library has accounting wide tax basis, so all is for operating expenses and all the staff expenses come out of that. So they don't get divided up. The FTEs don't get divided up.
The structure is the responsibility of the city.
Structure is the responsibility of the city.
Yeah.
But I do like the idea of looking at sustainable funding sources and I I'm still haven't thrown away the prepared food and beverage decks either. And I like the idea about, I mean, I think we ought to look at all those things and if there's some reason that is absolutely, you know, impossible. Fine, but I think you ought to look at all of them. I don't, I don't think we would be doing our jobs if we didn't look at all the options.
Yep.
Might be a trouble to us. So, and so I think those are 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 good ideas. And Coco, I have to tell you, somebody that used the. Scout cabin once for an event a long time ago with state employees and the feedback that I got was because it wasn't such bad repair. They would use it again. So the hurdle for being able to use that as a community building is actually getting to a place. Where people would like to do it. I'll also tell you in the back of my mind, I worry a little bit about it being a historical building if it can be. Brought up enough knowing that people have conferences like video and internet and a bunch of other stuff, like a historical building problem.
They used to have security systems, phone lines and other stuff there. So all of that has been taken into consideration when I threw out that five hundred thousand. It's mainly the ADA accessibility. You'd have to build a separate or bring one of those C X T. ADA bathrooms in and you'd have to have pads and pathways because you can't cut into the structure, but that's true of a lot of buildings.
But I think if the building was in good shape and nice, people would rent it out.
Oh, there's a lot of people that are. Yeah.
And I was just close to doing a music event.
And it's been cleaned up a lot and we have other events that we're tapping into check, but that's just one of the many. Streams and that's user fees, cause you can do it there, cause there's already a structure set up for it.
So, so go ahead, Jamie. I'm so sorry. Wait. I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, we have a lot of great ideas. What we need now are are champions for each one of these ideas. Um, you know, who on the commission, you know, would be able to help? You know, kind of lay the groundwork or or start the ball rolling on some of these tasks, you know. As a group or you you know, either a couple of individuals, an individual or maybe a. Partnership or whatever, or here would be able to maybe let us get these. Get these ideas off the ground, great ideas, but we need help, right? We need.
Um, I just have a question for maybe Lance, you know. Other events within the parks. That create. More work for staff. We charge for those events?
There's not really, I mean, the only thing that really is like the trash and we don't pay for trash, you know.
Like if they do an event, they have to bring in.
We do charge for electrical.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, we're not a for profit, so we just charge.
Yeah.
What we, what we lose.
Because because the tax base pays in theory pays or the it's be there.
Well, I was thinking we touched on this point earlier with the big Kahuna. That's the only time that people can to the park. Seems reasonable to me that if I were coming to the park and I didn't have to drive from. And get a reservation from Sunset Bay, you get, I mean, from Madison, kind of panel, you could park there. I would be happy to pay a small nominal fee to offset. I presume those people, these are spotless.
Uh, it's pretty good. It's not bad. Um, they uh, they're pretty.
Something that that a city could get, you know.
Not gonna be much.
I always struggle with that piece. It's because it's like, yeah, somebody is bringing an event in. That's that's open to all the citizens for the city of Coos Bay. That that basically I feel they own the park. So then these guys are putting on a service and then I'm gonna say. This is gonna cost you guys to do it. And I I struggle with that, cause I feel their park is not really my park.
Well, and it's more, it's more than just um, the city charging me. We also have a partnership with the full board. Um, they've been doing this event for gosh, how many years, guys? It brings over two hundred fifty swimmers and those aren't just people. They have families and and parents. All those people come to this area and they shop and they eat. I I hear what you're saying. I just think, um.
It's like literally the three A and four A basketball and this year volleyball tournament, um, it's. The people volunteer and do it just as it brings people here and then they spend money on the community and then hopefully come back.
Well, once we set up a foundation, we can put a pot down.
We still have that relationships with scouts V S A. It's just the scouting organization itself has changed. So they're not having a lot of the overnight camping in the jamborees and stuff that they used to because they're an organization that's. Changing their focus, but they're gonna be scouting America starting next year. And we have that relationship with the people that are remaining using that. But if that building gets fixed up as we go down this road, the questions will come up. Number one, do you have MOA, you know, MOUs or. MOAs with those organizations and I can't find that we ever had anything other than the. And I'm talking about storing things and putting things in there. So.
Right.
Those are things to think about with the buildings that the city owns, but somebody else is in the building, you know what I mean?
So I think back to Greg's point, is, is there anything on the list that a commissioner would like to research further? And bring the information back, Carmen?
I'm interested that the uh, foundation.
The foundation, research into that. Eric?
Yeah, I'll certainly take action on the um. Public private partnerships for bike pen.
Okay, um, I'll reach out. I'm working with a parks consultant on a a different project, so I'll reach out to them and see if they have any. History with the Parks and Rec District, if they have any experience with that, um, and see if they can gather any.
Is there any way that we can have staff talk with finance or city manager to see what. Is plausible with that special district option because.
We we can.
Um, I wish we would have had.
And and please chime in.
Anybody.
But there, I mean, it's all, all, it's all O R S. It's all. What you have to do. Um, and just like you, five minutes of Google expert here, but um, you know. We can, we can, we can start with the city manager, see what she, you know, maybe. Has a comfort level for, but I think the heavy lift probably would fall on this, this body. But um, yeah, there's a whole bunch of different steps you have to go and it has to go to some sort of.
What I'm looking for is qual or clarification on if we even have rooms. Something like that within our taxing structure.
And what happens with the taxing? Does it take away?
When's our bonds fall off? When's this building fall off?
I think it's like twenty twenty eight, cause that's something like that, cause we were looking at it from the library.
So like as something sunsets, can you bring something else in and then pump it there, stable? You know, I guess that's what I'm asking. I don't know the availability of that possibility. You know, in terms of its legality, so.
Is that something the city staff can look at with, with, when the bonds, the existing bonds are falling off?
But the bond, you can't bond for cars.
No, no, but but. The dollar amounts.
Try to keep it. Literally, I think when they redid those bonds, some of it, when I was on the budget committee, I didn't go this last year and renew, but. They were talking about when this sunset and they were looking at that. Money for something else in the budget. So they already have that. I mean, I'm sure you have a.
It was, it was the library. In fact, the original bond, the original bond for the library, although you couldn't explain it well in the, in the valid measure was that. There was a lower tax rate on the, on the actual bond money and when the fire station dropped off. The the tax rate kind of went up again, but basically people's taxes wouldn't increase. Basically, it was the difference between what they were paying on the fire station and the library would get more. So it does say. One last thing about taxing districts is, and again, if I remember this correctly, it's kind of like urban and rural districts too. You gotta get people to agree. I like the idea of Cruz Bay and North Bend together, cause I do think there's a lot of waste of money, but the difficulty then is. You gotta get everybody with all the different little taxing districts, the North Bend School District and whoever is in a taxing district in North Bend. As well as Cruz Bay to agree to it. So you multiply the number of people that need to agree to.
And every time you make a decision, it changes. I was successful in getting a road district in the county renewed with a five hundred percent tax increase. Teen when we were in the recession, the reason was because I did all the work.
Well, to get the container ship and the. Well, and that's something that that, I mean, everybody aids system development charges, um, but that's something. Is, is, I mean, we missed the boat on the big development that was down there again. Um, but that's something to look at is, is development projects.
Good job.
I know, that's your.
That's what Eugene used a lot of times, cause anytime there was a new. Subdivision or they were redoing something where they didn't build the dreams housing or the old Ms. Uh, it was Eugene Blue Jays. I was involved in that project and that was because. ODOT had land that they didn't use. We got it back. Everybody held their fees. And then they said, but you have to have a park and you have to fund it. You've got to put in the water drainage and all that other stuff. And if the developers and the people there don't want to because you're being hit with that housing shortage. It's just the timing, but I I'll do the grants and the volunteers, cause I've already got information. I'm already working with. So there's, what I'm hearing you guys want to tack on a development fee associated with our permitting structure like our.
Building. Improvement district, that the same thing.
Like you have your I T fee now for things.
Yeah, so you're talking about fee schedules and that everything. So.
So maybe just so I can remember.
Just gonna say this, you know, every time there's a fee increase, the city council has to approve it. I even know for the library, you know, how much do you charge for copies? I mean, we have to send in a fee, had to send in a fee schedule every year and here you have to say, yeah, okay, that's okay. You can charge twenty five cents.
Yeah, I know it's gonna be on.
And if you need some help with foundations, let me know. Because you know, one of the things that I think you can do with foundations is there is some general. Bylaws. I mean, the one for the, I'll give you the one for the public library and, and you know, it's like cut and paste. You change the mission. You maybe change the membership, but a lot of the stuff is, I gotta have an annual meeting. I gotta have an audit. I gotta, that stuff is pretty cut and paste.
Great.
And then you file with the state and I think we pay them fifty bucks a year or something and you file with IRS.
All right, well, I'm into it. I completely forgot the.
I know, you always bring it up. I looked at you and like.
Looks like we have one more. Maybe each champion and that's gonna be the prepared food and tax beverage.
Carmen.
Maybe.
Well, I guess that, that's something I was gonna kind of try to work on, but I was gonna, I have the plan in my head. That it's a little bit more like a mixture of a lot of different things. It's a, yeah, it's a gumbo.
It it's kind of like Coco's idea though, you know, I go into Safeway now sometimes and I shop and before I get to checkout, you wanna push the one dollar button.
So you want a ready and pencil? Is that what you're saying?
I kind of wanna see about how much people would opt into it.
Yeah.
And if I could create a foundation that restaurants could opt into. Have this thing that they will record and we had a button at the restaurant. It's like, so they give a dollar that adds to this.
That would be like the Restaurant Parks Association of Coos Bay, North Bend or whatever.
Yeah, so that's kind of what's going through my head, but it's like, it's like multiple. Yeah, so that's kind of what's going through my head, but it's like, it's like multiple things. It's all these, all these things.
On our work session for September, the only item that we have on there is the kinetic art discussion, um. So I think that we should, um, continue this conversation as a main topic, um, for. Our Sept- our September fifth discussion.
I have a question on your list.
Are you tabling the other part?
It, I, it's, it's gets ten minutes.
Well, no, it, it's an item on there that needs discussion, because the artist was going to do that ODOT work, and he was out there measuring today. Okay, great, as you reached out to you. So, I'm, I'm.
I think on. On your list up there, I think the grants. We already have the mechanism for that, we've done extensive research and brought in, and we have a grant writer. So, are you saying you want some more specific information, or I'm, I'm confused on why. I mean, we said that, but we have that. And I go to the meetings when I'm available, so. Are you wanting something more than what we have on here and what our grant writers and us research with the projects that we're looking at?
No, I think, I think we're good with.
Okay.
If, if we're gonna continue this discussion, if there any way we could have either the city manager or the finance director join us?
Sure.
Yeah. Rather than the stuff's hashing through this.
I have questions.
Yeah.
You guys wanna, I mean, it'd be nice if we had some of those questions in advance, so the city manager and the finance director could be prepared.
No, we want it on the spot.
Why should it be any different than what we do to you?
What they mainly wanna know is what your budget impacts would be for compression if they had a taxing district, I think that's one of the questions.
Be able to rattle that up.
If you, if you wanna send the.
So email questions, if you have.
Just suggesting that, that Friday update, if we just put a little leap in there about somebody interested in being a. Volunteer coordinator for the city. When I send some people into the city to fill out the fourth page background, they will know who to talk to. Because two years now, I haven't had anybody come back to me, I'm not, I put my lawnmower down or my. Clippers and then find a piece of paper in my pocket or not, and I'm not gonna do that when I'm working at the garden, but if we had a. Little bleak, maybe somebody would come in, or somebody at the city could. Put that under their, their pile of papers, to say, oh yeah, these are the four pages you need to fill out.
I think it would, it would be beneficial.
My see somebody that's already retired that. Used to do very similar something, or others, but can simply coordinate and get back to the person. Whichever park or bikes, people, uh, restaurant people, whatever, could.
I think that's a great idea, especially if it's someone that's outside the city, that's not limited to the hours that the city's open.
Yeah, they could volunteer themselves.
Yeah, because there's the people that are volunteering aren't, sometimes they can't come. So I think as long as we're using the city forms, I think that's a great idea.
Volunteer. Volunteer coordinator.
Volunteer, volunteer coordinator, unpaid volunteer coordinator.
Because we have all the adopt a part forms and. You know.
That could be somebody who might be interested in.
Right, any, uh, additional closing comments, um, before we wrap for today?
But just on the agenda for the meeting on August fifteenth, one of the items is the bike and fact finding committee. Would you like, or would you like any kind of. Presentation put together for that, or, I mean, I'm offering to contribute to that, we've already had a couple of meetings of, you know. Pre fact finding committee.
Was it, was it not approved at the last meeting?
It was not, so we have to have. We've, staff had to get together, we have an application process that the city manager's office wants to follow, so we're gonna present all that to you folks. For approval, if you like it, then we'll run with it, so that was, that was, that was one of the.
I think we dumped on staff, we did, we, we, we said, come up with a name and come up with the procedures and the membership.
It's okay, and we just didn't have enough time between last month's work session and the regularly scheduled commissioning, get all that information part of it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, if I can help contribute to that somehow, let me know, because if they have a. Small group of people that are likely to be part of this, I've already meet a couple of times, and so I've already taken some notes, I mean, I don't. Share that kind of stuff with you if you're interested.
Yeah, I think we're just worried about just getting some. So is that information being sent to Greg for the next meeting, if you're on that? List, would you like us just to take a picture of that information and send it out to everyone? I have the picture, but if you're one of the people that's on some of those things, do you want us to send the fact finding to you?
I, no, I think you guys can just present it at next month's.
Oh, okay. Like, if you want the forms or whatever we came up with, you want it so you have it on your agenda?
Your guys' work session, I'm not sure I'm following your, your question.
Do you want, so let's say that I found some information for grants or volunteers or tax revenues. Do you want it in an electronic format so that it can be shown during the work session, or do we just bring in what we gave you?
If you want us to print up copies, we certainly can, but we have that.
I don't know if we have the ability to share screen.
Oh, okay, okay, no share screen, that's what I wanted to.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, any additional comments? Thank you so much for being here today, see you in two weeks, um, for the August fifteenth.